Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. If everyone can take their seats, we'll call to order the workshop session. Thank you. First order is discussion regarding the condition and alternates related to the pecan tree outside the municipal court building.
Mayor, I turn that over to Mr. Hodges. You all right?
Mr. Hodges, come on up and talk to us.
Well, as y'all know, the tree was struck by lightning. And I think when it first happened, Finley and Chris Isaac called me up, Iker called me up and said, "Look, could you take a look at the tree for us and see what you think?" And we all made an assessment. We thought it was going to come back. It's a native pecan. And sometimes lightning kills them, sometimes it doesn't. This time it didn't. The drought did. And so it just, it was fighting, it was trying to make it, but the drought stopped it dead in its tracks. The middle part of the tree is dead, and it's dead all the way down into the earth. So what's going to happen to these limbs that are sticking out like this? They're just one day going to go fall off. There's mushrooms on the side of the tree where these limbs are, and that's indicative of a rot. So it's just kind of a matter of when, y'all.
Okay. Does counsel-
Hate to do it, but it's got to come down.
Counsel, have any questions or concerns for Mr. Hodges?
I'm going to cut it all the way to the ground and then grind the stump. So, and if anybody wants any of the firewood, it is good firewood. Be happy to load it up for somebody. You can make a pin out of it, like tree diode. But that's, it's got to go.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, y'all.
Mayor, without objection, staff will handle this administratively.
Sure. Sooner the better, I would think. Next item is discussion and recap from the comprehensive plan workshop meeting on
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few notes and highlights, I think Becky did a good job of memorializing the meeting in the minutes that are attached to this workshop cover that you will also be asked to take action on in the regular agenda. Just a couple of things that we would note, certainly what we heard, and then if there are other things that you need to refine in terms of the information that's included in the minutes, please let us know. But I think there were a number of items that were somewhat floated to the top, and maybe some a little higher than others, but, you know, including some economic development items like encouraging retail and hospitality venues, particularly downtown. There are a number of other economic development type, the bi-local campaign, that there was also a mention or a reference to, you know, making sure that we can keep some of those things going, but also understanding that those can get a little more resources to them once an EDC director is hired. The other things that were referenced as kind of a higher priority, including being more aggressive about code and particularly substandard building enforcement and requesting that an inventory be prepared and looked at in the next meeting or two. We also heard from you that we wanted to flush out a little bit more of the wastewater master plan and maybe even do some education and hear from Ekrem and Associates regarding possible options related to an interceptor program. I think the other thing that was, did garner a lot of discussion, and there's maybe no short-term solution to, but it certainly, staff heard this, is something that was important to you to at least start taking a look at, and that's truck traffic. That's something that was referenced pretty heavily in any focus group that we had. We think that there may be some short-term, I'm not going to say solutions, but some short-term means to address that. However, we think that maybe the ultimate way to address that would be through the relief route in terms of truck traffic. There are a number of items that we wanted to, at least we heard you say, that you wanted to kind of continue the current progress. The infrastructure cost share objective. We also note that there was a reference to concern regarding solar power and how that possibly could impact us either negatively or positively. The progress of the hostess house in terms of the meeting venue. There were a number of land use items that were fairly large in terms of their scope. When you start talking about historic preservation district and guidelines and regulations, rewriting your zoning regs, et cetera, those are, I guess, what we heard from council was, those are something that we do want to take on, but we want to maybe look at low-hanging fruit to start out with. We know we've got some very obvious differences between what we have on paper versus what's on the ground. And so those are some things that we heard from council saying, "Let's try to grasp at some of those very obvious differences between what our current regulations are versus what's on the ground, as well as anticipating what other trends are that are identified in our comprehensive plan." So those are things that we will take on as we go, but probably try to aim for that low-hanging fruit first. Talked a little bit about trails and the need to maybe do a couple of things. Trails and that walking green belt from Brook Park to basically Campbell Park was an item that's been talked about for a long time, 20 or more years, and certainly it's emphasized in our comprehensive plan. And we think that we have the opportunity maybe to get a start on it by taking a look at ownership, as well as taking a look at opportunities to do some clearing and preparation maybe of a future corridor. We also talked a little bit about the need to continue the discussion with potential partners on the New Hope Baptist Church and Historic Colored School. Not really any big jumps, but I think what we heard council say is, "Let's continue the conversation and try to see what some sort of partnership would look like." Talked about transportation primarily, I think, I think staff mistook that as cars, and I think one thing that Councilman Clark corrected was, "How do we get people, you know, walking pedestrian ways, trails, even kids on bicycles? What are we doing to make sure that we can improve some of those connections for pedestrians?" And then we also heard from council that you wanted staff to go ahead and begin to initiate those capacity-building relationships with other community organizations, the county LISD chamber, in the form of meetings. So the, that certainly doesn't 100% cover everything that's included in the minutes, and certainly we'll refer to the minutes in terms of our game plan and our action plan. And I'd certainly like to hear from council if there's something that I need to refine in terms of my comments or anything you see in those minutes. But that's, that was a takeaway, and just from a staff perspective, I thought it was an efficient meeting and a, it was a good meeting in terms of the ability to hear from you and get some consensus from council on some things that were important to you.
Does council feel like everything's being discussed that you wanted?
Yes.
Thank you, Finley. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have discussion regarding any other item on the agenda? If nothing, I would say we could adjourn the workshop and go straight on into the regular session. No problem? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll go straight into the regular session. I'll call that regular session to order, and I would ask Chief Cummins to please give
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with open hearts and minds. We thank you for this opportunity to take care of some of your business for your people. We pray that you will be with us, will be able to discuss, share information, and make good decisions for the benefit of all. We're particularly grateful for all the moisture you brought our way after a long series of no moisture and drought, and we thank you that it's come fairly gentle without too much damage. We ask that you'll be particularly with the family in our neighborhood who was in our community, who was affected by a fire this weekend. Thank you that there was no injuries, but please be with them. We ask that you'll be with us in safety till we can meet again, forgive us of our sins, as always, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in pledges. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic with which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on earth and in heaven. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Oh, there's the judge, okay. I can't see if the judge is ready. Judge? No. Is the judge ready? Judge coming? Okay, one minute. You guys ready? I'm just waiting. We do have tonight a swearing-in ceremony for Jeff Phillips and Jacob Lovey. Judge Griddell will do the swearing-in.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here today to introduce our two newest hires. I'm going to start with Jeff Phillips. He probably doesn't need introduction. Jeff worked for us about three years ago, for six years. He did us a good job when he was here last time, and we're glad to have him back. My second gentleman to my left is Jacob Lovey. Jacob's new to us. Jacob comes to us from Taylor PD, where he worked for five years, and spent some of his time, or the last part of his time at Taylor PD, working as a school resource officer. Jacob was hired to fill one of the open SRO vacancies that y'all approved for the additional SROs. So Jacob comes, or Jacob's family moved to the Lampasses area from the Taylor area because they liked this pace of life and liked our community. So we're lucky to have him and his experience here at the PD. To pen, Jeff Phillips is his daughter, Abigail. Abigail, will you come up here with us? And to pen, Jacob is his wife, Ashley. Ashley, will you join us? Judge Griddell, would you please minister the oath?
He has to. Pass it to Chief Smith. Hold. He's raising the right hand. I state the name. Jeff Phillips. You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A Lampasses police officer.
Lampasses police officer.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great. Would you like, thank you, would you like to get some pictures? So we're good to go? Go on up this way. I know Jacob, Jacob has more family here. Do you want to take one in group, Jacob and his family up here? Jeff, would you like one with Abigail along? And Jacob, would you like to invite the rest of your family up after that? Hey, Ashley. All right. I need you.
We got the most important folks coming up now.
I love you.
Thank you all.
Welcome to Lampasses, y'all.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thanks. Our next item is public hearing, citizen comments. We have citizen comments. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on the items presented under this agenda item. Do we have anyone? Mr. Alexander, welcome.
Good evening. I just wanted to, we've been in service for a month and a half now, and I just want to tell the council what a great job the emergency communications is doing at the police department as far as dispatching us. They have gone above and beyond, and I know that Kelly was very worried, to the point of being scared to death at times before we started, but they have done a great job. We've also developed a great working relationship with the fire department, with Chief Smith and his people. We train very often together, our crews and their crews, do stuff, do dinner together, breakfast, and there's a very good camaraderie between both departments. I just want to let you know what a great job they are doing.
Thank you for that. We appreciate you saying that. Next item, citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. Does anyone wish to address? Public hearing to receive citizen comments to consider vacating 2.03 acre plat out of Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasses County, Texas, per local government code LGC, 212.013, vacating plat, and 212.014 replating without vacating preceding plat.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in 2015, WTG Fuels had purchased 2.3 acres of land from the LADC Business Park. A few years later, LADC has purchased that two acres back. So as part of a prerequisite for us to go in and do our preliminary and our final plat for the business park, we're going to vacate that 2.03 subdivision and just put it back into the 151 acres out there.
Any comments? Thank you, Becky. Public hearing to receive citizen comments to consider the approval, denial, or approval with modifications, the preliminary Lampasses Business Park subdivision plat of 1.0, I'm sorry, 151.638 acres of land out of the Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasses County, Texas.
So this evening, we're asking for your consideration, the preliminary plat for the business park. We are initially going to do it into five lots, as dictated here. We'll have lot one at 7.526 acres, lot two at 3.706 acres, which is actually the detention pond that's kind of right in the middle. And then you have lot three at 9.762 acres, lot four at 98.813 acres, and then lot five at 25.192 acres. And the property is located on the west side of US Highway 183. We do have zoning distinctions identified for them as being low, medium, and high, meaning we'll have more of a low retail spot, we'll have some commercial, we'll have some industrial, and it'll be allocated accordingly to the business needs. And we will have city electric, water, and sewer available for phase one. This did go before my planning commission on November 3rd, and they did recommend approval.
Any comments or questions?
I've got a quick question. So with the, with the way the lots are broken up, that wouldn't just be for one business, right? Like, I mean, they'll get broken up again?
Yes, this is just our initial go-around, the way it's defined. And as we get businesses that go in there and they get developed, it will change, and we anticipate that. And it may not change, but right now, based on these five lots, this is how it's been identified.
I might add some additional comments. So the EDC, when they platted this, I think you've probably seen the conceptual of where it had 14, 15 different lots. We felt like this particular plating would provide latitude for businesses coming in that maybe needed a set number of acres for their business. We knew if we had platted it in those original 14, 15 lots, we would probably have to subdivide anyway. And I think what we're saying here is that we have more latitude to carve out a piece that's appropriate for a particular business. Council should certainly expect that this will be subdivided again. It's just, we chose this starting point as opposed to the previous chart, starting point.
How do you go about marketing that as far as communicating the marketing if somebody's looking for, say, a five-acre track?
We'll accommodate.
Okay, all right. And I think we, the one thing that we tried to make clear to the EDC is that we still have to be very thoughtful about where that five acres is. In other words, we can't, you know, make a commitment and then have a .5 acre track as something that's left over from the other subdivision. So we still have to be thoughtful, maybe make them take that extra sliver, et cetera. So that, we will have to be careful about how it's subdivided.
You don't want to box yourself in on anything.
Precisely.
Make sure it's all developed.
And the low, medium, and high intensities, are those to be determined depending on what hoop, what business comes in? Or do you have it planned out with this lot's this, this lot's that?
So the, those designations have not been assigned to the ground yet. The concept is that those businesses or those parcels that are closer to the north end are going to be a lower intensity of use. So less noise, less traffic, you know, maybe normal business-type hours. Those that require more traffic, whether that's logistics, or batching, or anything like that, might be located more towards the south end of the park. So there's not a line drawn yet, and there's not specific, but those zoning districts have been identified.
And then that one lot wraps around Myers Cedar Yard, are they, they do their milling on-site? Yes or no? Do you know?
They do what?
Do they do their milling, Myers Cedar Yard?
Billing?
Milling. Do they mill?
Oh, I don't know. I, I think a lot of their cedars brought in already cut, but I'm not 100% sure. I don't think they mill much of anything there.
Finley, when it's replatted, it could be, if a business came in and needed more than one track instead of replating it, it could be lot one, two, and three, or whatever of certain blocks, can't you?
Correct. It'll be, it'll be identified uniquely, so whether that's lot 1A or lot 2B, that sort of thing. So it'll have a unique identifier.
Do we have any prospects talking to us yet?
We have had some that have talked to us in the past. We still have a little work to do in terms of some of the land use regulations and the electric as well, but yeah, we're going to be reaching out to folks that have talked to us previously. I, I think the other key, and I know we're, we're talking about a replat here, we aren't talking about what we're going to be doing with it, but I think the key is commercial real estate firms and brokers. I think that is the key.
Okay. Next item is a public hearing to receive citizen comments to consider the approval, denial, or approval with modifications, the final Lampasses Business Park subdivision plat of 151.638 acres of land out of the Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasses County, Texas.
This is just part two of this. We want to go ahead and do the preliminary and the final together, so it's the same information, the same summary of the business park itself. We just want to go ahead and do both at the same time. And again, the planning commission did approve the final plat as well.
Going on, we have a public hearing to receive citizen comments to consider vacation and abandonment of .24 acres, 60-foot wide, of an unopened Dublin Street east of South Howe Street between outlet 18 and outlet 25 of the LHW Johnson survey, part of 1,003 South Howe Street.
So the city owns a portion of the unopened Dublin Street, being .24 acres lying east of South Howe Street between outlet 18 and outlet 25, as shown on page 28. It kind of shows you how this meets together, because I wanted to be able to show where the actual street easement is. So of the .67 acres of this parcel, you can see where the street is highlighted between outlet 18 and outlet 25. This was a deed that was sent from the Castleberries to the Stolts, and then therefore went from the Stolts to the Carlisle's back in 1985. The .24 acres of Dublin Street located east of South Howe is to be abandoned, vacated, as improved, and not open to the public. And this has been this way since 1985, but just recently, Mr. Kriegel, surveyor in town, has reached out to me to do some research to clean up anything regarding this plat, the deed, the survey notes. And we found that there wasn't an ordinance that actually vacated or conveyed this street that was unopened to the public that's always been part of this parcel. So through some research, we identified that, we reached out to legal counsel, we created an ordinance, we got everything together that we needed to present to the planning commission. So we did that part, went to the planning commission, and outlet 25, you can kind of see that it kind of sits out by itself, and there's .04 acres inside outlet 25 that is actually to the next parcel, what it appears to be. So at this point, when we're going through the planning commission, Mrs. McCoy, who is the owner of the property at 1,004, which is a neighbor, had noticed that the same request was done back in 2007, but she wasn't sure of the outcome because she did not attend the meeting at that time. So the planning commission at that time wanted to wait for me to review the letter, do some more research, and to determine exactly if anything happened to abandon the street back then during that time period. So I went back and I researched the letter, and this is attached at your dais with regarding to the letter that we received from her, Mrs. McCoy, as well as the letter that was dated 2006, and which is the same information we're looking at today. And then it also shows the minutes that I attached in there as well to show back from January 4th of 2007, how it went through the planning commission and it went through city council, and they had approved the abandonment at that time or convey of this road that was unopened. However, Mr. Carlisle, for whatever reason, decided not to move forward. So it was kind of dead in the water at that time. So I did my research, I provided this information to my planning commission, and I wanted to go ahead and have the public hearing with y'all this evening, so that y'all know this is to be considered, because of the fact I didn't want to hold up the process. So we're doing the public hearing now, it's already been advertised. I will present back to my planning commission in December, and then bring it back to y'all for final consideration at that time. So this is all we're doing right now, like I said, is just the abandonment of Dublin, which is the 60-foot right-of-way.
Any questions?
Excuse me, if anybody from the public wants to speak, I have one comment regarding it.
You may. I don't know if you may.
I presented this to council back in 2007.
Yes.
And at the time, I was still working for the city- the city. And at the time, the city was selling the easements, and the reason Mr. Jarvis Carlisle didn't move forward on it is because the city had put a price on it, and he decided not to buy it. Now, my understanding, also in that meeting from the council, that they were concerned about retaining a drainage easement in that, because that's part of the floodway coming off that dam off, and that lake, flood control lake on South Willis, and that this was in line, and this is where it went. I assume at this time, they're just trying to clear up the property, but the concern was still if the city releases it without retaining some kind of drainage easement, that there could be a possible flooding down in those areas if that drainage was filled up. So I don't know what the answer is to it.
And I think Mr. Clark is correct. Back up until 2015, we required payment for easements. In 2015, we did make some major changes in terms of the conveyance, the close, abandon, vacate, and conveyance of easements. And so I'll correct one thing that Becky slipped up and said. Becky said, "We own that property. We don't own that property. We have an easement on that property on behalf of the public. We act as trustees for the public on that easement." This is, this is an absolutely, this just shouldn't exist, right? There's already been a property line drawn between outlet 18 and outlet 25 that has been practiced. In terms of the drainage, the only concern I have is this one-story frame residence that you see on the building there, or on the Goodson survey, is actually surrounded three sides by a ditch. So would we retain a piece located, you know, the bamboo patch located somewhere there, but not go back? And then when do you stop trying to get, and you know how many easements, drainage easements we have in town?
I understand.
We don't have a whole lot. But, and then the question, you know, probably for J.C. is, does keeping that little piece of the easement imply some sort of maintenance? So I'm cautious about requiring a drainage easement. I think you say that's where the line is, the 188-foot line, that's where it's always been. You convey whatever you own, whatever easement that you have north of that line to outlet 18, and whatever easement you have south of that line to outlet 25, and just go on.
I wasn't making a statement that there was any action taken.
Right.
There was just talk about it, and I was a staff member at the time, and that's why I tried to bring it up to council, just to clarify that. I'm not saying one way or the other, right or wrong.
Understood.
I want to be sure you understand that.
You bet, I understand.
So just be abandoning those easements, and those property owners would get that property back? There would be no easement?
Correct. And in fact, the courts have found that where there is a dedication to the public of an easement, as opposed to a fee title to that property, that the underlying fee simple ownership of that property is vested in the adjacent property owners. So if you own, you know, your street, you own to the middle part of that street, and the nursing home owns to the middle part of that street, underlying fee simple. You cannot, you cannot use any of your ownership rights on that easement, because it's dedicated to the public, and we have to make sure that we maintain that dedication, we act on behalf of the public in terms of that easement.
Does the McCoys wish to add anything at this time, or?
Well, I own the property, lot 25. Lot 25, we own lot 25. And our concern was that the surveyor wanted to convey that portion, that little pie shape, to the new owner of the lot 18. It's been sold, as far as we know. I'm not positive to whom. But it was our concern that they were going to convey, abandon, convey that portion of the street on their property to them, in addition to that little quarter inch, quarter, little pie that, I think it was 1.24, 1.24 acres, in other words, that little pie shape was going to also go to them. Well, our property line goes, not absolutely for sure, but it goes almost all the way to their property line. And more or less, we didn't know why they were wanting to convey it to them, and not just, if it's our property, just convey it to us, in other words. If it's never going to be a street. There is definitely concern with the drainage. That was one of our concerns. Why were they wanting to convey it to them? And if there was some reason they were going to put a culvert through there, make their lot bigger, which I can understand, but the drainage definitely needs to be not messed with. That's our concern, in other words, and we express that through the zoning committee, too, and which we will again.
And have your concerns been answered?
Well, not completely at this point. We're in the process of having our property surveyed, and then we will know exactly where our, where the property pin is, and also where theirs was. Well, we won't know where theirs starts until they have it surveyed. And that was the thing, the surveyor was wanting to get all this cleared up before he surveyed the place. So, which I can understand that, too, you know. I kind of understand all their problems, all their, all their things that we're going through, except conveying that little pie over to them. I didn't know why they wanted it. I don't know why they wanted it, I mean.
If it's on your property, it would go to you, if I'm correct.
It would be staff's position that any piece of Deblin that is south of the line you see on the south border of outlet 18, be retained by outlet 25, and anything north of that line, go to outlet 18.
Right.
Exactly.
Now, just to clarify, there may be some, a technical reason that you would split that little pie shape, but in this matter, that's an established property line. That's the property line that both parties have understood exists, and I think we would simply, and we would not survey this. That's an expense that we don't need to go through, and we would just simply convey whatever easement that we have to the property owners, north and south of that line.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're good with that? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in. Any other comments from council? Thank you, Becky. 2.0 minutes, discussion and possible action concerning approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 24th.
I didn't see any corrections, recommend approval.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 2.2, discussion and possible action concerning approval of minutes of the special meeting held on November the 8th, 2022.
Again, I didn't see any corrections, recommend approval.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. The consent agenda has one item, discussion and possible action regarding purchases and charges in excess of $4,000 from October 1 to October 31, 2022.
Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is city manager's operational report.
Just a few brief items, mayor and council. I think Mr. Alexander gave you a good report, or made some good comments that certainly are in line with my memo to you regarding the monthly report from Hamilton EMS. It did show that the chart indicates the call times and response times for those calls within the city of Lampassas. It does also make a complimentary comment regarding the praise for the city's dispatch service. They didn't also note that in one case where an ambulance was delayed, they had both FD staff as well as a Hamilton shift captain on scene to render aid until that ambulance could be at scene. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to, and I'm sure Mr. Alexander would be happy to come a couple of times a year and just provide a personal update to you. If that's, without objection, we'll go ahead and start scheduling that.
Sure, I'd like that.
Historic market, we did receive our historic market. It's been two years, you notice the date at the bottom of it says 2020. This was approved by the state historical commission in 2020, was referred by the Lampassas County Historical Commission. And I do want to highlight the fact that this designation was originally packaged by Jeff Jackson, who was instrumental in doing some additional research and recording of the building. We will do an unveiling, probably we will wait till first quarter of 2023, and maybe even try to include some additional overdue signage. Relief route, just a quick reminder that TexDOT's Public Open House on the relief route will be held on November 17th from 5:30 to 7:30. It is at the current middle school, not the old middle school, so go over to Broad Street for that meeting. Should be very informative, and I'm hopeful that they'll have some better ideas about that route. Industrial Park, we have executed contract for the concrete removal at the city's industrial park. Notice to proceed has been issued, and we anticipate that project will start sometime here in the next day or two. Recycling concern, and just, you may have seen this from time to time, but typically if somebody makes a, or provides a complaint to city staff, particularly if it's related to policy, I always like to at least include it in the report, and in that way you can say, hey, we need to talk about it more, or, you know, ignore me and dummy, you don't need to hear about it anymore. But we did receive a concern from a county residence about county residents not being allowed to drop off recyclable material at the citizens' collection station. And just as background, council probably recalls that based on public use and cost, it was decided to provide a single drop-off point at the citizens' collection station. And there was, there is an increased cost for that, and that cost was basically borne in the rates, borne by the customers within their rate. So we added an extra dollar or two, I forgot how much it was, to all trash customers in the city to provide that service. The person that sent the email said that they would not mind paying for the service, however, sort of, some sort of policy direction from council, we don't have a means to set a fee, collect a fee, et cetera. But in the event you would like that placed on a future agenda, I'd certainly be happy to do that, or whatever comments you might provide at this time.
I think it'd be okay to set a fee for county residents to use the recycling facility. I don't see a problem with that, do you?
Do we have a place to go with it? If we collect it?
Well, we do through our waste hauler. The question is, the other thing we may need to ask, and if we open this up to the county, will that put some additional burden on the hauler? Because the recycling business isn't, is profitable as it used to be. It's a...
Doesn't LCRA have a yearly or quarterly kind of recycling program that we could be part of? I know other counties surrounding here participate in similar. That way, a lot of that is a one-time deal, and it's not on the city itself.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with an LCRA program for that. I can certainly look into it, though.
Don't we collect fees down there for other things?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be a burden for them to collect another fee?
We do normal cash handling down there, is just a course of business.
So it wouldn't cause any more burden for the city employees?
I don't think so. But if you'd like, I'll put this on the next agenda. I don't see too many people saying no, but we'll put it on the next agenda for further discussion, if that's all right.
Thank you.
Airport, we just wanted to let you know that we have, our scoring committee, under the leadership of Ryan Ward, did meet and reviewed three submissions for the airport master plan, terminal area plan, and the highest rated firm was Park Hill. Park Hill's done several projects for us at the airport, the last two that we have done out there, they've done. They are experienced architectural and engineering firm. Now that that is done, we turn all that information back over to TexDOT, who handles the final negotiation and contracting. And just as a reminder, the project is being underwritten through federal money, and there is a 10% match, which is estimated at about $20,000. Park Lights, just wanted to let everybody know that they are on schedule to actually be completed this week. They want to complete them, get all the displays up, all the lights up, and then test them this week for opening night, which will be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, November 23rd.
How did they handle the hailstorm? Do we know? Did they really look at them yet?
You know, I have not, I have not heard anything from Chris regarding the lights in the hailstorm, so I think he would have mentioned something to me had there been an issue, but I, we'll see, particularly once they get tested. LCRA steps forward program, they're doing that again this year, they'll be in town April 14th. We typically line out two or three or four projects for them to do, anything from painting and landscaping and outside work. Chris Iker is working on the formal request at LCRA, and that's due on or before December 9th.
Will that list, will we get a copy of that, what he's proposing?
Sure. Yes, we normally will provide that to you, so I think, I think there were, is Ryan, are you aware of any of the projects he was looking at?
I'm not.
We'll have to get back with you on that, but yes, we will, we will get those to you.
Okay.
Fort Hood, you've got some information from Fort Hood attached to the report from Heart of Texas Defense Alliance. We give those to you, not usually every month, but we give them to you usually a couple, three times a year. Shows you about the impact of, and the number of personnel and related personnel at Fort Hood, as well as, also wanted just to remind you that Comptroller did a 2021 study of the impact of not only Fort Hood, but of all military bases in Texas to the Texas economy, and Fort Hood has about a $28 billion impact to the Texas economy. Skate Park was still getting held up a little bit by the rain. Spa is also getting held up a little bit in other communities they're working with. We still think that things will come together just fine, and hopefully we can get this project done and get it started in terms of the last phase or the vertical phase sometime before the end of the year. We did go ahead and give them the okay to order steel, so that should be arriving onsite, I think, within the next three or four weeks, yeah, about that far. Employees, we want to also recognize the employees that began their City of Lampassas careers in November. Scott Haverly, six years, Charlie Boswell, 19 years, Jacob Hummer, nine years, Derek Iker, seven years, Mary Mendez, 15 years, Joe Swartz, 15 years, Mary Garcia, five years, Dylan Boyven, two years, Micah Harry, eight years, Joshua Palacio, seven years, and Dwayne Griffin, 13 years. And I just have two other very quick items for you. One is that we would also, we would like to ask council maybe to check your calendars for the week of November 28th. That's when we're trying to see if we can do some interviews for the EDC director position. We've always invited council to help participate in that. It's not typically at the best time for a lot of council. It's usually mid-afternoon for two to three hours. But double-check your calendar if you would, we'll be sending out an email on that item. Also, I feel compelled to tell you that we've issued, how many peddler permits today? Two and a half, which is two and a half more than we would normally get on Monday, but we did have a, we did have an event on Friday. So we'll probably push out some things through social media that there are going to be people walking around looking at your roof and trying to take dents out of your car and things like that. So all of them have complied with our peddler ordinance, and we just wanted to, if somebody asks you about it, you can tell them, yeah, we have received some activity here at City Hall regarding folks that are here as a result... Hall regarding folks that are here as a result of the storm event we had on Friday.
What was the date on the interviews? November the 28th?
The date hadn't been said. I'm looking just at the week, sometime during the week of November 28th.
Okay.
Could you look at maybe the 29th?
Sure.
Is it a day?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Finley.
I just wanted to say that Becky and I had a fun afternoon one day this week. We had six classes of third graders that wanted to see how the city was run, and so they came to our building. Quite noisily, I might add, but they were just as fun as they could be. They all wanted to see where we sat, they wanted to know what we did, and we told them as best we could everything they wanted. They had some very interesting questions. Several of them are going to grow up and be politicians, so we've got a good group coming behind us, so it was a lot of fun. We have no unfinished business. We have new business. 7.1, discussion and consider the winner of the website photo contest, and I believe there's just the one entry.
Recommend entry one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 7.2, discuss impossible action to consider vacating 2.03 acre plat out of Daniel Stanley survey. Abstract number 631, Lampasas County, Texas, per local government code LGC 2.12.013, vacating the plat.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing, and at this time I'm asking to consider a motion to vacate the 2.03 acre plat of the Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasas County, Texas, per local government code 212.013, vacating the plat.
I move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.3, discussion impossible action to consider the approval, denial, or approval with modifications the preliminary Lampasas Business Park subdivision plat of 151.638 acres of land out of the Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasas County, Texas.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing, and at this time I'm asking to consider a motion to approve the preliminary Lampasas Business Park subdivision plat of 1.1, sorry, 151.638 acres of land out of the Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasas County, Texas.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 7.4, discussion impossible action to consider the approval, denial, or approval with modifications the final Lampasas Business Park subdivision plat of 151.638 acres of land out of the Daniel Stanley survey, abstract number 631, Lampasas County, Texas.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing, and at this time I'm asking for consideration of approval of the final plat.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
7.5, discussion impossible action regarding a quote from CDWG for Citrix DAAS Premium Plus, a cloud-based desktop as a service application, allowing remote access to the network in the amount of $8,497.75.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you. I feel like lately I bring quite a bit of software up here, kind of moving us in the IT forward direction with the help of our IT team. But I did reach out, this has been several months ago. We began talking in IT and myself about how can we, you know, stand something up that's secure, where folks can work away from the office? So adding the remote access that, you know, previously, years back, we'd had a system that was, you know, quasi kind of VPN. But we want to be able to work in the field as we move forward and as technology goes forward. We purchased five new Toughbook tablets through Dell, or the ruggedized tablets, and the intent is to go paperless. I know that's been a big push, is to get to the point where we're going paperless, but having the ability to work in the field. So these tablets that we purchased are on, I think Verizon's network, I think it's a Verizon. So currently, staff can work out in the field now, so they can pull up, you know, maps or whatever they're doing. We have our own GIS asset that we use internally, that they'll be able to pull from as well. But ENCODE, anything that sits behind the network, so the cards work fine now, they can check their email, they can, you know, get to the web to look at Google Maps or whatever it is now, but having the ability to log in and get to your network drives or, you know, the admin piece that we want to give folks. So work orders, because the work order piece is what we would like to get. We're starting to make progress on going paperless on that. But, and Monica may be able to speak to this a little bit better, but there was a couple vendors vetted, so we did look at various alternatives from virtual private network type of setup to this, which the DAS is nothing more than a desktop application as a service. Basically, it's an emulator of what you have on your desktop, and so it can be set up to look just like it, but it's a secure connection, so it keeps, you know, our network protected. And that was the main goal. So not necessarily folks working remote, but myself, I know the city manager, Becky, several folks work from home on the weekend or at night. It's nice to take your laptop home, but we don't have access to ENCODE, we don't have access to our network drives where I store most of my files so that they're backed up. So having the ability to do that, aside from the folks working remote as we're collecting assets in the future in the work orders, this system does that, and it keeps us safe. The 25 concurrent user licenses I would mention is what comes with this package. It's a yearly fee of approximately $8,500. 25 license will go a long ways for us. So even in the day, we've got those five tablets. Water wastewater has some extra tablets that they use, so even if we added those, we're about 10. Anybody else working away at the time could pull that, but it basically checks the license in and out. So if somebody's not using that license, it checks it back in, somebody else can check that out, so it's not user-specific. And this is through the State of Texas Procurement, CDW government, which has already been vetted and through the procurement process. I'll stand for any questions.
How does it handle POs?
Let's get a motion first, please, and then we can start with questions.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of Citrix DAAS Premium Plus in the amount of $8,497.75.
As far as handling POs, so you...
I'm sorry. I need to...
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear that. Now we can ask some questions.
I just wondered about the PO system. Is there still a line in there for an approval or disapproval of something when somebody turns in a PO?
It would still function just the same as it does now, but you'd have the ability, if you wanted to do POs away from the office and you had access to ENCODE, you could do that.
So it'd be $8,500 a year?
$8,500 a year.
Do we need 25?
I did ask the question, and I believe Christie and IT vetted that with them. That's their minimum user license is the 25. They don't have anything less. That was a question we had asked.
There's some other companies that would have something similar that could have less?
I'll let Monica speak to that.
So we did solicit three vendors. Two of them required an abundant amount of hardware, software licensing. It was more on-prem. It wasn't in the cloud, and you could get less licenses with that, but we really liked this solution, and we wouldn't have the reoccurring hardware and software costs that we would have with the other two solutions, and it's completely secured. And we, it's come up quite a bit that more than just the public works department would need access or could benefit from the ability to have access to their desktop PC and their applications in various departments. So I think that the 25 licenses would be used, and as we grow and we get more tablets, I don't think that it's, you know, I think it's necessary.
In reality, how many people would use it right now?
I would say about 10.
And these are at about $400, oh, $340 a subscription, so 15, I mean, that's a lot of money.
What is the money? If you were going to compare this subscription, the $8,500, to what it would cost for the other ones that had the less, that had the hardware and stuff, what were the price differences?
It was a big, big jump.
It was significant. So what you're really doing is you're taking a cloud service, comparing it to the other software packages with hardware, so servers, the hardware, somebody maintaining that, upkeeping that. I mean, everybody's familiar with software. There's always updates. Somebody's got to run a firmware update or software update.
And the retention for ORRs, so you're looking at space to keep all of that data.
And so the, so the cloud option is kind of the direction we're really hoping to move, to take some of that burden off, you know, because as you add more things to, I think sometimes I forget that even myself. We only have two folks in IT, and so trying to manage as we bring new software on and the load and the amount of work that they're working through, you know, having the cloud basically takes care of a lot of that, because you've got their IT working on keeping it up and running and updating it as it comes, and you're not having to manage a server and hardware that's got a lifecycle here.
I mean, it makes sense, it's just, and it's a good idea, I guess, to move forward or towards that, but, I mean, if we're paying four or five grand for 15 of these, we don't know if people are going to use yet or not, I mean, is there going to be some pushback from staff that doesn't want to move in that direction? I just don't want to pay for some stuff that we're not going to use.
Right. No, and I'm with you. I think change sometimes is difficult in some areas in public works. I believe is always one of those that I've struggled with, because we've implemented in other places I've been implementing new technology, and it usually takes some time, and that's why we've kind of set this up in kind of a step system, so we've got the tablets, they're familiar with that now, they're used to using it. And so once, you know, we, if we do switch over to this Citrix application, things will continue on like they are now. So most of those folks that are using that, and as Monica mentioned, in the future, we're hoping to grow that, so that at some point, we're doing all of our work orders out the field, the metrics and the things that we're looking at for time to, you know, if we get a call for a water main break, our response time, and those things can be built over time to where you're improving those, but you've got to be able to do that in the field, you know, not just at the office. So it does...
Right now, they have to come in and pick up their work orders, correct?
Right.
So they wouldn't be having to come in and do that. They would have access to all of their work orders out in the field on their tablets.
Yeah.
And I, go ahead.
I mean, I just want to kind of, probably one of, the question you ask is what value do we get for this? You know, what are we buying? What will it improve? And I think the most, one of the most compelling reasons for this is the work order process. Right now, our staff comes in, goes see, you know, goes and picks up a work order, takes that work order out into the field, handwrites on that work order what they did, brings that work order back in, gives it to Robin. Robin keys that information in, and then closes the work order out. This is something that they don't, they won't have to come in, they can close the work order out on, I mean, it's going to save a ton of time.
Will they do it, though? I mean, will people do it?
I think, I think they're going to have to.
It's their job.
A lot of our public works guys, they don't, they don't want to come down to City Hall. They would, they'd rather be out and, you know, doing their job. This is another step, and I don't, I mean, we could put a metrics on that in terms of time used, but, I mean, it's just so much more efficient. It's just that in and of itself, just the work order process is worth $8,500 bucks, in my opinion.
But I think the key to that, too, Councilman Morris, is training. I mean, as long as you train individuals, and we've been doing that even, you know, in the beginning, I thought, I don't know how well people will be open to doing GPS collection. So we have a handheld tremble unit that sits over with our electric department, and they use it. Nobody else was using it. It's a, it's a really good instrument. And so I set up some training classes. We went out there, we, we did some hands-on, I got it updated. IT helped us get the software up and functioning, and we've been using that to collect data. You know, it's like anything else, you really, you've got to keep working at it, keep chipping away. You know, there'll be times they set it aside, you know, and it's like, hey, you know, when we have some downtime, let's go back and collect that. But it's just getting in that mentality, and I think a lot of it is folks feeling comfortable and feeling trained that, hey, they can do this, you know. I think that makes it a little bit easier.
And which budget is this coming out of?
This will be the same non-departmental fund, the 10-599-5600 that we had set aside $42,000 for, for the executive time, so we're using under $30,000 for that, so this would come from that.
It's here. Once approved, if approved, how long does it take to get it set up and working?
That's a great question. We talked about that a little bit this morning. I feel like the timeframe is fairly quick. There's a few things that IT has to set up on our end, as far as gateway connections, and Monica will speak to that probably in more detail if anybody wants to know that. But timeframe-wise, it's fairly minimal, several weeks, I would think. I mean, to get it up and running and to build, because basically we can emulate, you know, if they log in, look at my desktop, make it look just like that. So there's some admin structure that they've got to work on that would take a little bit of time, but it's pretty quick.
Probably a dumb question, but if it gets approved, is that annual basis from the date that y'all get the subscription? It's not calendar?
Yeah. Shoot.
No, ma'am. No.
I think he's wondering, do you pay the $8,000 in October or November, and then you have to pay it again in January? Is it yearly, based on when you take the...
Just whenever you sign up, you got a year from there?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion impossible action regarding the approval of a fee increase at Hancock Park Golf Course. Mr. Berry, so nice to see you.
Good to see you all, too. I'm recommending an increase at the golf course on weekday and weekend green fees and on the six-month memberships. We haven't had an increase since 2018. We hadn't really fallen behind at all as far as staying comparable to the other courses. On our green fees, basically, it's a $5 increase. It's $3 on green fees and $2 on cart rentals. Just to kind of make it easy, so when 99% of people come in, they get a green fee and a half a cart. So it would bring the green fee and a half a cart on weekdays from $34 to $39, and then our senior fees would be $36, and then on weekends from $39 to $44, and the senior fees to $41, $41. And then the nine-hole fees for the seniors stay the same, the nine-hole fees are going to go up just a slight bit from 27, excuse me, from $26 to $30, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it wrong. Green fee and a half cart on a weekday for nine holes would go from $20.50 to $23.50, and on a weekend from $23.50 to $26.50. And then I'm not going to go through all the courses, but there you can see where we're kind of comparable with some, we're a little lower than some and a little higher than some. But basically, it ends up being a $5 increase is what it is. And then on the memberships, our memberships run on a six-month basis from January through June and July through December, and right now, for instance, a single membership is $3.65, and it's recommending going up 20 bucks across the board on the memberships. So it'd be $40 a year. And then on the cart shed rentals, going up $25 on that and $25 on the trail fee. So it's be $50 a year on the trail fee, and then another $50 on the shed rentals. And this was taken before the advisory board, I believe, on the 3rd of November, and it was voted on unanimously. Any questions?
I move that we up the fees for the golf course.
Move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending Lampasas Code of Ordinances Appendix A Fee Schedule, Chapter 54, Parks and Rec, G Golf Course Fees.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any questions?
How are our numbers out there, Van?
Been busy.
Yeah.
Seems like crazy busy since COVID. I thought it would slow down, but every year's been...
And as far as the memberships...
And as far as the memberships, the same way?
Memberships pretty much stay about the same. Yeah, I mean, we've, we have picked up some, we've picked up a lot of out-of-towners, we've got a lot of play from Cove Clean, we get a lot of people from the, we have a lot of people from the Burnett area, too. Yes, memberships have picked up, but not noticeably, really.
It looks like the only ones that are cheaper than us are San Saba and Lano, I mean, San Saba and Coppersco.
Yes, San Saba and Coppersco usually are cheaper than us. Lano usually is a little bit cheaper than us also, some, and I could have gone out there and gone to a lot of other courses.
The membership fees per, per six months.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, but nobody wants to play over there.
And did you have a lot of damage from the storm on Friday?
It's been a weird month. Well, on Friday, not so much, we had a lot of leaves. We shut it down because you couldn't tell where a green started and a fairway started, and it was just a lot of cleanup. And we actually, they got a lot cleaned up today, and then the misty rain hit, because 90% of that stuff, we have to get our mowers out there and just start chewing it up. And then it got wet and it wasn't doing a very good job, but we're planning on opening it up tomorrow, but we were closed all weekend, because, yeah, it was, it was, but as far as damage, just to the trees and leaves, you know, earlier in the month when we had all the limbs down, that was what was pretty destructive. We had, we lost a few trees and a lot of limbs, and that took a while. In fact, we were still cleaning up, but we still got a lot of little stuff, it just takes time to pick up, so.
I guess, I did, I didn't hear what you said in regards to my question. Are there any instances you see from Coppersco and San Saba going up?
Not that I know of, no. Ca, San Saba just went up. They actually went up to this fee two, month or two ago, that fee that's on here.
What's the condition of that course over in Cove? I mean, are there a lot of people going over there?
It's, they're struggling, and I don't want to talk bad about anybody with the golf courses, it's dang hard to take care of, but they've struggled in the past, and we do have a lot of members from there.
Yeah, and San Saba.
San Saba is actually getting, is coming around good. I played, we had a little tournament, we have a match play tournament with them, and we played over there at the beginning of an October, and they've redone some of their green, their front nine greens, and it's, it was actually in, I was really surprised, it was in very good shape.
That's great.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion and possible action regarding the reappointment of board members to the library advisory board.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, this is, this is that annual time where we are reappointing, I would like to do Deanne Willis and Ruthie Martin back to the library advisory board.
I move to approve that Deanne and Ruth, Deanne Willis and Ruthie Martin are back on the library board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a board member to the zoning board of adjustment.
Um, mayor and council, again, this is just the annual process that we go through to make sure that our boards have adequate volunteers. This one's kind of unique. I lost a couple of board members from my zoning board of adjustments, and so I reached out to my board and asked them to recruit people who would be interested in it, and they might have a good experience or background that might assist them in making these types of decisions. I did have a board member that reached out to me and said that Eric Hernandez was interested, so I reached out to him, made sure, validated, he sent me an application and wanted to be a part of my zoning board of adjustments. Councilmember Kenny had reached out and wanted to know about the applications, I did not include them in the packet this time, I normally do, and so I did put them at your dais for you to review as well. I do want to point out that Tim Heffley has also applied for multiple boards that he's interested in, and he'd be happy to be on any of the boards. I did not want to appoint him to my ZBA at this time, only because of the fact that he has other interests like CIP, parks, other boards that I think he might be of value to as well, and so that is just where we are this evening. So I have spoken with Mr. Heffley on a couple of occasions and told him that I am keeping him interested in boards because he has such a wide variety.
Before we, I did a quick question before we went on with this. Have, did you talk to Mr. Heffley before recruiting for more spots? Like, if he was interested in it or what he was really interested in?
I have spoken to Mr. Heffley on two occasions regarding to getting him appointed to a board. Yes, I have.
And he, because his application was already in when you got Eric's, and so I was just curious to see if he was interested in this one or if he was really more interested in a different board.
When I get board applications, if they're only single for one specific board, that's where I'm going to direct them to. If I have someone who's interested in multiple boards, I can utilize them in a different capacity, so I always keep that open to where I can put them where I need to fill gaps.
But he wasn't asked about this particular one, right?
No, I did not specifically ask him the last day or two with regarding the zoning board of adjustments. No, I did not.
He's here. Do we want to ask any questions of Mr. Heffley? Okay.
But keep in mind, though, I do have alternates on my zoning board of adjustments I need to fill as well. I'm just, like I said, I'm down a couple, I wanted to make sure that all of our boards had adequate coverage before I do anybody who puts multiple options on there.
I'd entertain a motion to approve Eric Hernandez and appoint him to the zoning board of adjustments.
Nope, I was, I'm asking.
I'll approve, I'll, a motion to appoint Eric Hernandez to the zoning board of adjustments, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is appointing a board member to the construction board of adjustment and appeal.
Again, mayor and council, this is the same annual request that I do every year. Again, this is another unique situation with my construction board of adjustments. These are specific to trades. I've had a mechanical vacancy on here for a couple of years now because Mr. Burns had left, and so having a replacement on here has been a little tough. So Cory Butts actually reached out to me and said, hey, do you have any vacancies, either electrical and mechanical on your construction board? I said, well, I said, your uncle is still on my board as my electric representative, but I do have a mechanical vacancy if you're interested. So we have gone back and forth via email since September, I think 23rd is when our first email correspondence started going back and forth. He's been busy, I've been busy, I just got his application today, it is on your dais as well, but he is more than qualified to fill that mechanical spot for me.
Move to appoint Cory Butts to the construction board of adjustment and appeal.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
I will go into executive session. Consultation with attorney by telephone and our in-person concerning matters with the attorney has a duty and our responsibility to report to the governmental body. Cause number 302699C, District Court of Bell County, Central Texas Water Supply Corporation versus Kipner Water Supply Corporation versus City of Lampasas, and/or any other matters posted on the regular agenda. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mayor and council, I'd ask Ryan Ward be included in the executive session.
All right, we're back into regular session. We have no items coming out of the executive session, so I would get a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.